Very, very, very. That's because normally you would imagine.
Right, you have the assets to set up a trust.
But nevertheless.
Or an estate administrator.
Guys, ready? Good evening. To call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order, please. We have a couple of housekeeping matters we have to take care of before we can get to the actual appeals, so we will try to move through those as quickly as we can. The first order of business is to approve the minutes from our last meeting way back on March 27th of 2012. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 27th, 2012.
Is there a second? All in favor? So approved.
Second.
The next order of business is, I believe that we have someone here from the town council, or at least that was envisioned, who is going to talk about townway issues.
Good evening. See you in a different.
Yes.
Behind a podium, though. Absolutely. Anyway, well, my name's Jim Walsh, and I'm a town councillor here in Cape Elizabeth. And I was also on the zoning board for six years, and the six years I was on the zoning board, we never had this many people come to a meeting. So I'm glad that we're doing the people's business here. One of the decisions made by the town council this year was when we ever enacted a new piece of legislation in the town, or referred anything to a board, a member of the town council who was assigned as a liaison would then go to that particular board and inform that board of something new, some new responsibility that the board may have. So in this case, we have the townways ordinance, which is Chapter 17 in the town ordinance. And about, it's about a year ago now, Stonegate, there was a sale of some land and two lots that the particular developer decided to apply for a driveway permit and bring one of those lots out onto Stonegate Road. Obviously, there was a lot of controversy and discussion about it. This particular board actually heard one of the questions about that, and the town council itself wound up being appealed to as the final sort of decision-maker, if you will, relative to whether that particular building permit was issued properly. So after that process, it went to court, and there was a lot of discussion, and things were settled to the satisfaction of both parties. Town council decided to ask the ordinance committee to look at this question, and to go back to this particular section of the ordinance, and to address some of the things that needed to be updated. And so I would like to just explain to you a couple of those, and then get out of your way so you can get on with the business of tonight's meeting. Basically, the townways ordinance, anyone who wishes to connect to a town road must obtain an entrance permit from the public works director. The public works director applies standards to determine if the permit will be issued. His decision is currently appealed, as of last month, to the town council. The amendment that was adopted after a final hearing in front of the town council will go into effect on the 10th of October, and that amendment will designate the zoning board as the place where that appeal will be heard going forward. The second issue that was cleaned up in this particular ordinance was a standard has been incorporated as a concept of access management, something used in the permit process. This concept has been found, been around for about 20 years, wasn't included in our original statute. The goal is to preserve capacity and safety on town roads by minimizing new curb cuts that will still allow every lot for vehicular access. The third issue that we cleaned up was we applied the site distances that are in our current subdivision ordinance to this particular ordinance. Again, more consistency being applied across legislation here in Cape Elizabeth. Final piece is a standard has been updated to recognize that hardscape pavers are an acceptable part of the ordinance. That currently is not in there and effective on the 10th of October. That will be allowed. In the final piece, just to reiterate, you now, as the zoning board, will be the appeal body that will look at whatever is decided by the public works director. And again, we appreciate the fact that you'll be taking on this responsibility. We think it's the appropriate place for it to be. The town council has been reviewing all of its ordinances to make sure that things are up to date, and then some of the current thinking that exhibits itself in other ordinances in other communities similar to ours is being applied appropriately. So I thank you again for your service. I appreciate the work that you do. I understand the work you've done and continue to do, having been on this board for six years. And again, as your liaison to the town council, I want to thank you on behalf of my colleagues for the work that you've done. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Are there any other communications to come before the board this evening? Okay, hearing none, I think we can turn to our new business. It's a sort of housekeeping logistical matter here. It appears that we have four issues to be heard here, two of which are related, as they both arise out of administrative appeals by Mr. and Mrs. Murphy. We also have an application by Raymond Taylor and an application by Betty Jane Shreve. It appears to me that the applications of Mr. Taylor and Ms. Shreve are a little more straightforward than the administrative appeals of Mr. Murphy and Mr. and Mrs. Murphy. So unless anyone on the board disagrees, I suggest that we deal with Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Shreve first and let them go on their way. Okay, let's begin with Mr. Taylor. Is he here?
Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
I am here this evening to see if I can get permission to be able to have an employee from time to time to help me in my auto detailing business at 2 Harrison Avenue. And that's basically pretty straightforward, and that's basically it. There's no real increase in my business, per se. It's just going to help it run a little more efficiently than it now is.
Okay.
That's basically it.
That was actually the first question that I had, was you telling us you don't anticipate an increase in the volume of the actual vehicles that you detail?
Nothing's going to be changing in that respect, no.
Okay. And do you have any provisions for where the employee would park, or how we would get to?
I have off-site parking available.
Okay. And where is that?
The church parking lot. I have permission from the people at the Mormon church to park cars there.
Across 77?
Correct.
So it's safe to say, then, that there wouldn't be any additional vehicles in front of the house, or in a?
Not at all.
Beyond what you already have?
That's correct. That's correct.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Have there been any other changes to your operation since it was originally approved by this board?
No changes at all.
So all of the other standards, compliance with all of the other conditional use standards remains the same?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, have you seen some of the correspondence that the board has seen around?
I have.
Both in support and, I guess, not support of the application?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I'm just looking at Sheila Roy's concerns expressed in an email of Sunday, September 23rd. I wonder if you could speak to that?
Yeah, there was a concern that I remember seeing about creating slight congestion with cars in front of the house, which are our cars, actually. It is momentary. Sometimes I have to pull cars in and out, out of the driveway, and that's the only congestion, per se. There have also been some times, people tend to go fairly quickly coming off Route 77 onto Harrison Avenue, and we, from time to time, deliberately park cars out on that road because it seems to act as a buffer and actually slows people down quite a bit. I also take issue to one of the issues she brought up, that I think it had to do with there is no, this is not going to adversely affect any traffic in any way. Basically, that's it. And she mentioned something about the possibility of values, of property values, going down, which I take issue with. There's no basis for that at all.
I'm just, I guess, curious, how, diving into how your business operates, how will the additional employee, I guess, improve the efficiencies? I guess that, from my perspective, if you're adding an employee, that should almost by extension lead to, hopefully, more business.
But, in this particular case, I have a medical condition as well that'll help with that. Sometimes I just need the help when I can't do it myself.
Okay.
And it's, you know, in the, excuse me, and in the, you know, in the winter, I have little or no business at all to speak of, comparatively speaking. It's just only during a few months during the busy seasons, primarily the spring and the summer, that I see the need for additional help.
So you see this as kind of a seasonal?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
How many cars are parked on the street on any given day? Did you say just?
No customer cars at all, ever.
But personal cars, one?
Personal cars, maybe one, and then, you know, when my wife gets home in the afternoon for a short period of time.
Is that every day, or some days?
No, no, it's not.
About how many days a week, would you say?
A couple.
Okay. And how many months of the year do you think that the employee will be working? Three, four, five?
It's sporadic. You know, it can be a few weeks straight, and then I'll go weeks without even needing anybody. This is an as-needed, when-needed basis, strictly. I go months, two or three months, without needing any help at all.
Okay, thanks.
Does anyone else in the audience like to be heard? Come on up.
My name is Libby Barrett. I live on Spurwink Avenue. I'm curious about when this business was established, I can't see from where I am, but I can hear, and I believe it's coming from this business. I don't know the correct term. Loud, Mr. Taylor, where are you? Oh, do you use some kind of pump or generated something in your business? Because I hear a loud noise that I'm assuming comes from your business. Not all the time. Some automated something that you use.
Vacuum?
No, not a vacuum. This sounds more like a pump. I don't know, pumped water, or pumped something. I don't know.
Have a conversation with Mr. Taylor. He needs to come up, too.
Okay.
Why don't you come up to him, Mr. Taylor?
Can you describe exactly what it is you? This is so elusive.
Well, I know. Because I'm not mechanical, it's hard for me to guess, but almost like a generator sound, or?
A power washer.
That would be it, the power washer.
I'm not sure that that is an issue that's probably before us today.
But it concerns me because I'm afraid it's, he says his business isn't going to increase, but, and the question was asked whether anything had changed since it was approved, and so I'm just wondering, was that in the original approval?
Mr. Taylor? We always used a power washer.
I don't think we ever addressed anything about that. I mean, I use many different things in the operation of my business. Vacuums, power washer.
I can hear the vacuum, too, but it's not that, but the power washer is quite loud, if I can hear it on Spurwink. So that's just a concern that I have.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, to close the public discussion now. Thoughts?
I would simply note that it appears the business qualifies as a home business to begin with, with the exception of perhaps the noise issue that was just raised, and the home business definition already permits no more than one person who is not a resident. So if what is being sought is the ability to have one employee, it already falls within what is otherwise permitted by the home business definition, but is not in this case permitted because of the fact that it was a condition that was placed on the conditional granting of the business application back?
Correct.
2002. So removing that restriction does not seem out of the realm of possibility to me.
I think that so long as the provision remains that no more than two client vehicles are permitted on the property any one time, then, as Chris pointed out, the ordinance already allows for one additional non-resident employee.
Okay. But I think it would be appropriate to modify the permit as well to say that, to the extent the employee is on-site, that his vehicle, his or her vehicle will be parked off the public roads. Sounds like Mr. Taylor's made an accommodation for that, or made plans for that, but I think that that would probably be appropriate and should deal with some of the concerns of neighbors about congestion.
And I would note that that seems in compliance with what appears to be one of the existing conditions, which is no personal vehicles on Harrison Avenue while there are client vehicles in the driveway. So this would further note, no personal vehicles or employee vehicles.
Okay. Anything further in discussion? Do I, should we vote? Anyone want to?
I'll move that we amend the existing conditional use approval to delete the condition prohibiting one additional employee with a provision that one additional employee is allowed, but that that employee vehicle shall be parked off public roads. Someone have better language for that?
I think that sums it up. I second that, and I would move that we, with that proviso, that we vote on the various conclusions. Mr. Taylor? Do I have a second? Second, okay. All right, we will proceed to the conclusions that we have to work through pursuant to the ordinance. One, the proposed use will not create hazardous traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity. All in favor? The proposed use will not create unsanitary conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, or other aspects of its design or operation. All in favor? Proposed use will not adversely affect the value of the adjacent properties. All in favor? Proposed site plan and layout are compatible with adjacent property uses and with the comprehensive plan. All in favor? And five, I think is irrelevant, but I will say it regardless. The design and external appearance of any proposed building will constitute an attractive and compatible addition to its neighborhood, although it need not have a similar design, appearance, or architecture. All in favor? All right. I move to approve the application of Mr. Taylor for revision to the previously approved conditional use permit. Do I have a second?
Seconding.
All in favor? Next turn to the application of Betty Jane Shreve. Ms. Shreve, come on up. You're seeking conditional use permit to operate a home business specifically designed purchased wastepaper baskets, pails, and buckets for wholesale and retail distribution. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your plan? Ms. Shreve?
Well, my plan is to continue what I've been doing. Basically, what I wanted to do was put up a sign, and I found I needed to do a little more than just that. So I don't know, several years, about three years ago, I got laid off from work and started to do a hobby that has generated into, evolved rather, into a business that now is generating money. And so I designed these wastepaper baskets with a variety of designs from out of copyright, like J.J. Autobahn and that type of, the old vintage style prints, to some contemporary artists, who I have a relationship with, a business relationship to, give them a percentage of my sales.
Now, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I'll do this all on my property, which is the home I live in.
Okay. Now, how do you build these? Do you use any chemicals or industrial processes or anything of that sort?
I buy the metal wastepaper baskets from a wholesaler in Ohio, and then I paint the inside and the outside to match the illustrations that go on the baskets. That's?
So you're not using any manufacturing equipment or anything like that?
No, no.
Paint sprayers or that sort of thing?
No, they're cans, you know.
And are you proposing to put a sign up on your house, ma'am?
Yes, that's what I originally went for.
And what, how big of a sign are you?
Well, it'll be in this vicinity, you know, size.
About that size?
Yeah, about that size.
Any questions?
Are you proposing any employees?
I'm sorry.
Are you proposing any employees?
No. I have a helper, the person who lives with me helps me, but she's not employed, really.
Part of, one of the owners is Nancy Murray Johnson. Is that your?
My helper and partner, yes. She's right there.
And will not be active in the business, or is, will be active in the business, or how?
Off and on. There are things that she does to help, but there's no compensation for that.
It's what equity, as they say. Is she, is she a resident also in the household?
Oh, yes.
I guess it's not clear to me why this is a home business and not a home occupation that's permitted.
That's a question.
It isn't clear to me why this is a home business that requires conditional use approval as opposed to a home occupation that is a permitted use in her zone.
Yeah, a home occupation, you can't have any clients come regularly, meaning you can't really have sales, and you can't have anybody outside the home employed. So that's a difference.
I see. So you do have folks that are regularly visiting the premises?
I have deliveries, I have people, wholesale people, my clients, who pick up.
It's the retail, it's the retail sales, customers coming in that would trigger the home business.
Gotcha.
And customers, do you anticipate customers generally coming to pick up things as opposed to coming to browse?
Yes, I have somebody coming tomorrow from Cuddledown who's picking up some waste baskets, and she does that, I don't know, once every two months.
So how do you get, how do you get your orders? How do you get customers? Do they find you on the internet, or?
They do that, and I've done trade shows, the New England Product Trade Show, that's for wholesale, and the main restaurant and lodging this year, too.
In your application, it states that the number of vehicle trips per day is 10 trips per day. Is that your current number of visits a day?
No, that's not my current number.
That what you anticipate?
That's on the outside. That would be like, whoa.
So that's what you anticipate would be the most that would start?
Yes.
Visiting with the sign? And how long does someone generally stay?
How long will they stay?
When you use fairly, quick in and out sort of visits, or?
Some will if they're picking up, others, if I have my dining room table filled, you know, then some people stay a while, and they're like kids in a candy store.
We're just trying to, I think we're all thinking a little bit about congestion in the neighborhood, you know?
Oh, right.
If you had 10 cars there at once, it would be sort of a messed up.
Yeah, no, I don't foresee that, no.
So you're saying that you anticipate that the maximum that you would probably see in any given day would be 10 vehicles, and those would most likely be spread out over the course of the day?
Yes.
Basically, 10 vehicle trips is five customers, because each vehicle generates two.
Okay. That's good to know. Any more questions? Does anyone else want to be heard on Ms. Shreve's application? Sir?
I will. I'm Gary Beckwith, on 13 Oakwood Road. I'm a friend of Betty Jane, and I've, we have a couple of examples of her fine artwork. And not only that, but my wife and I, Jane and myself, walk down there frequently. You'll see us walking on 77, and we go by their house. And I do not anticipate that any traffic that comes or goes there will be of any hindrance to anybody. So I stand behind her in her request. And a small sign like that, hardly noticed. You know, I have a little craft of my own, but I don't hang out a sign. I probably have more people park in front of my house than Betty Jane will. But anyway, I stand behind her location.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Probably shouldn't tell them, you'd tell them.
Bruce will be over to talk to you tomorrow. Anyone else?
Gary and Jane always hold hands when they go by, too.
What, I guess I do have one follow-up question. What proportion of your business would you say would be more retail as opposed to the online variety? I mean, as you kind of look at this business over, say, two years from now, what would you say, what would you see that mix being?
Retail, well, I would maybe half and half.
But you never see yourself really exceeding that 10 trips a day?
No, I don't. I mean, it's not a gift store, and people aren't just clamoring for these. They just, you know, either love them because of their history and, or, you know, whatever, or they're not interested.
And will you be anticipating walk-in clients, or really just the sign is just to let people know that you have that business there, and they'd still be basically visiting by appointment?
Yes, I think, in fact, I'll put that on my sign. Yeah, by appointment.
Let me close the public discussion, and any comments internally on the board? Okay, let's move to, let's move to voting then. On the application of Betty Jane Shreve for conditional use permit for the business as described herein, we'll proceed to conclusions. One, the proposed use will not create hazardous traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. All in favor? The proposed use will not create unsanitary conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, or other aspects of its design or operation. All in favor? The proposed use will not adversely affect the value of adjacent properties. All in favor? The proposed site plan and layout are compatible with adjacent property uses and with the comprehensive plan. All in favor? The design and external appearance of any proposed building will constitute an attractive and compatible addition to its neighborhood, although it need not have a similar design, appearance, or architecture, to the extent relevant. All in favor? I move to approve the application for Ms. Shreve's conditional use permit. Do I have a second? All in favor? Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're good? Yeah, okay. We're going to take a three-minute recess so people can use, use the facilities before we begin. Yeah, go ahead.
...neighbors and forbidden to them, and nonconforming users will not be permitted to multiply when they are harmful or improper. And that language has been cited in many cases here in the state of Maine, one of which happened to be two light slops to shack versus the town of Cape Elizabeth, which was addressed in 1998. This is what is at the heart of the Murphys' appeal, both appeals this evening. They have been impacted by a decision of the code enforcement officer, which was in violation of Maine law, the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance, and was based upon improper facts and misrepresentations. As a result, the proper procedures under the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance were not followed, impacting the Murphys and their neighbors, but also potentially impacting the town of Cape Elizabeth as well. The matter once again, this matter once again underscores the concerns raised by three justices on the Maine Supreme Court, encouraging notice to neighbors who will most be affected by proposed construction versus not finding out until after construction begins, which is often after the appeal period has elapsed. Given the broad language in your zoning ordinance, this board does have the ability to hear today's appeal, and it would seem appropriate versus having this matter proceed to Superior Court only determine whether or not the appeal is timely or not, and they got remanded back at a later date before this board. To that end, I want to specifically address some of the factual allegations raised in Attorney Schumadin's response, which you have before you. And I think it also gets to the question of whether or not this matter is timely and whether or not this board has the authority to hear the arguments today. And that was with respects to as when the Murphys had noticed. And there have been cases here in the state of Maine where it's looked at when the abutting neighbor, when the affected neighbors have received notice of what's going on, and then from that point in time, whether the appeal is timely. It's my understanding that the Livingston's had purchased their property and wanted to make renovations, and that was no secret to anyone. And that discussion had started occurring long before the permit was ultimately sought. And you're well aware of the timeline with respects to, I believe it was in June, that the permit was sought and it was issued. But the Murphys weren't aware that the permit was sought and ultimately issued. In fact, there are no provisions in the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance which says that you have to provide notice to neighbors. In fact, there's no provisions in the Maine municipal code which encourages towns to file notice. And again, that's why I highlighted the language from three justices of the Supreme Court who are saying, "Why do we keep doing this to ourselves? Because this is what happens, and then we find ourselves here in Superior Court, back in front of the zoning boards." So like most cases, the Murphys were not aware that a permit had been issued. What they were aware of is when construction material ultimately showed up on the lawn in front of their house, and they said, "Oh, Livingston's are going to commence construction." And that happened much later on after the building permit had already been issued. As a result of that, they did seek out the code enforcement officer in wanting to get some background on what was going to occur, what was happening. They wanted to look at the plans, they had asked for materials. And again, you see the timeline there with respects to the communications back and forth between Mr. Smith and the Murphys, ultimately being able to schedule a meeting to sit down with them. Unfortunately, that meeting occurred after the deadline, the appeal deadline, as stated in the ordinance. Further to that point, it was after that meeting, as well as an onsite meeting, that the Murphys began to discover that this doesn't, you know, this doesn't all seem to add up, and this doesn't seem right. They then went about their own investigation to look at both the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance, as well as Maine law, and it was based on that investigation that they said, indeed, there are violations here, we need to do something, and that's when they filed the appeal. At no point was there any notice to them with respects to there being an appeal process, as to what that time was, "Oh, by the way, thank you for calling me, you should file an appeal right away, the permit was issued 28 days ago," nothing along those lines. And I think it's based on those facts that you can find today that the appeal was timely, that you have the authority to at least review the merits of the appeal and make a decision on that. I know that there's certainly cases that have been cited by Mr. Schumadin, but I think that the facts of this case are not directly on point in that case, in which that case that was asking, was looking at the decision process relative to, well, the code enforcement officer decided not to revoke a permit. And where this is different is, and actually where there's some language in the Maine municipal code, is what we're asking here is that the proper procedure with respects to what the town of Cape Elizabeth has set in an ordinance has to be followed when there's a nonconforming structure, when you're looking to expand, and when you're looking to do work in the shoreline zone, we're asking, is that procedure be followed? Certainly, upon the proper procedure in which that is followed, if there's violations or if there's things that are discovered that can't be done, I think the board will certainly have to make a determination at that point in time what needs to be done. But that is ultimately what is being asked here, and that's where the court has said the Board of Appeals does have the authority to address all issues raised and to correct plain error when it is found. And I'll submit to you, that's what we have today, and I'll get into that in a minute. Interestingly enough, too, one last point on this piece is that our subsequent appeal was filed timely, and again, there are some overlapping issues with respects to whether or not the plans were accurate, and whether or not this is a nonconforming structure. And should the board ultimately find with respects to our second appeal that there were errors made and the proper procedure has to be followed, it would seem to make sense that we're doing that relative to both permits. With that being said, again, with the first appeal, there are essentially three items that we feel were done incorrectly.
Are you going to get into the substance now? You want to hear the standing issue first?
I think it might make sense for us to hear the standing and the timing, the timing of the appeal issues first from both sides, unless the board disagrees. It may be, I'm not prejudging one way or another, that that may decide the issue, it may not. So it would probably be more efficient for us to hear those issues from you and from Schumadin.
Excellent.
That'd be great. Excellent.
Good evening. I'm John Schumadin. I'm from Murray Palmer Murray, and I represent the Livingston's, who are the permit applicant, permit holder in this case. I appreciate the board addressing the procedural issues first, because I think that really is what needs to happen, is that those procedural issues are essentially jurisdictional. If you find that it's untimely, that's the end of the case. If you find that they don't have standing, that's the end of the case. We don't need to get into all the rest of the issues.
Can I stop you there for one minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
The timing of this issue only applies to one of the two permits.
The first one, yes, that's right. The standing issue applies to the second one. So we want to, I think the appropriate thing to do is to figure out those questions first, and only then go into what's going to be a much longer proceeding to determine whether or not the permit was issued correctly. And I'd just like to state outright right now, I think we can prove with hands down that the permits were issued absolutely in conformance with every requirement in the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance. I don't think we're going to have any difficulty proving that, and if we have to, we will. But before we get to that issue, the first issue is these jurisdictional issues. And I'll talk, the first one is the timeliness issue, and that applies to only one of the permits, and that's the first permit.
What is the first permit?
The first permit is the one, is what I call the alterations permit. It approves certain alterations within the house, and it also approves an addition on top of the house.
Can we call it the top addition and the internal renovations?
You can call it, yeah, sure. I mean, that's basically what it is. It's altering the interior and the roof of the house, roofline of the house.
It's the house permit, right?
The house permit, yeah, sure.
Supposed to be patio permit.
Sure, we can do it that way, too. However, I mean, it really doesn't matter so much. But the house permit, that's the timeliness issue. I really don't see where they get to get anywhere. I mean, I think you only have one choice here. For a number of reasons, you have to find that it's untimely. The first reason is that it's a judicial decision to apply the just cause exception.
Talk me through the timeline, please.
Sure. In fact, all you have to do is look at their permit, their appeal application. Their appeal application has the timeline in there. Building permit is issued on June 22nd, which means July 23rd, under the ordinance, is the date by which an appeal has to be filed. They found out, according to their own materials, they learned about the building permit having been issued on the 16th of July. In other words, they had time to comply, they had time to meet the standard, they had time to file a timely appeal. They went to the town office on the 17th, so they actually saw the permit on the 17th. Again, they had time to appeal. Then follows a lengthy time in which they're basically deciding something, I'm not sure what, which includes waiting until sometime in August, or actually August 10th, before they even meet with their attorney, and then 12 days after August 10th before they file an appeal. Or actually, no, 14 days after they met with their attorney for the first time before they filed an appeal, because they filed an appeal on August 24th. That is over a month late. The way that the law works in Maine is you are allowed to hear appeals that are timely, which means appeals that are filed within 30 days. They don't meet that standard, that's the end of the analysis. There is a provision under Maine law, which Attorney Duchet has quite correctly quoted, that there is this provision out there, that allows for people to apply for a, what I'm going to quote, "good cause exception." The good cause exception stems from a long line of cases, going back to Keating, including Brackett and Viles, and it is all about extending the timeframe when there would be a substantial miscarriage of justice otherwise. But most importantly, every case that has decided this, including Viles, including Brackett, talks about this being a decision for the judiciary. It is a judicial decision, so only a judiciary, only a court can decide that this is timely under the good cause exception. But even if you get past that hurdle, which I suggest you can't, there isn't good cause here. If you look at the only two cases that I'm aware of that have found a good cause exception, they all talk about people who only found out about the work after the appeal period had expired. In other words, in both Viles and in Brackett, you never had a situation, or you had a situation where, once they found out about this permit being issued, there was nothing they could do. They had no ability, the time had passed, they can't go back in time, they couldn't meet the appeal deadline. There's never been a good cause exemption, or extension, rather, that's been granted to someone who had the ability to meet the timeline, who could have, but chose not to, filed an appeal within the appeal period. And that is exactly what this case is. It's just, and it may seem harsh, but that's pretty much the way the law is in Maine. And in fact, prior to Brackett, I would have said, if you miss the deadline, you're pretty much, that's it. There really wasn't any, I mean, there was that language of substantial miscarriage of justice, but it was never, ever granted. So you really have to show that you fit into Brackett.
Brackett is town of Rangel, right?
Yes.
Can you talk a little more about the, what you were discussing earlier about only a court being able to grant the good cause exception?
Yeah, both Brackett and Viles, and Keating as well, I believe, say that this is a decision for the courts. In order to eliminate local, I forget the word that they use, but it's basically malfeasance, I suppose, I don't know, bias, maybe that's the better word for it. So it is, in Viles, I know that there's some suggestion in Attorney Duchet's letter that the law court actually reviewed the board, the zoning board of appeals decision in Viles for an abuse of discretion, but if you read the case, the actual decision that was reviewed for abuse of discretion was the superior court's decision, not the board of appeals decision. So I think, when you look at those cases, the line of cases, it's always judicial decision to be made, not a ZBA decision.
Are there holdings that say that ZBAs that have granted a good cause exception to the 30-day appeal period have been overturned on those grounds? Are you aware of any cases to that effect?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
Are you aware of any cases that have held or overturned ZBA decisions granting good cause exceptions because they have held that that is something that is solely within the court's jurisdiction?
No, but I'm also not aware of, I'm not aware of any ZBAs granting a good cause exception. It just, it...
So your view of the law is only found cases where the superior court or an appellate court is the one that's actually made the reversal on good cause, you haven't found anywhere. The ZBA as a matter of first instance was saying, eh, you know, close enough for government work, we'll let it slide, even though it was 30 days, or whatever the deadline was?
Well, Viles, they, I believe Viles, they did find, the ZBA did make a decision that was timely, and then the superior court made the decision to uphold that. But it was the superior court decision that mattered, and the superior court could easily have reached a different decision on that case. It wasn't bound by the ZBA decision, it wasn't required to follow the ZBA decision at all. I know there's some suggestion that you just, you know, find that it's timely so that we can go through, because why should it go up to the court and then come back? I understand that argument, but I think the problem is, is that you can't get there from here, because you can't find that it's timely. I mean, even if you get past this hurdle of, and say that, you know, you have the power to decide, at least in the first instance, knowing that a court's going to review it basically de novo, even if you decide that, there aren't facts here that are even remotely like Brackett or Viles. Both of those cases, which are completely different from this case, in neither case did you have a situation where an applicant could have met the appeal deadline and did not. In both of those cases, you have an applicant who found out well after the fact, and then immediately took steps, in one of the cases, immediately took steps and got a stop work order. And also, if you look at Brackett as well, you know, they talk about not just that the applicant has, or not the applicant, the appellant has acted in a timely manner, but also evidence that the town has violated its ordinance, and also evidence that the permit holder has violated the permit. I mean, that's the Brackett case there, right there. I mean, ultimately, what I think we need to remember as well is that there are two sides to this thing. On the one side, you've got the rights of the appellant, who isn't a butter, doesn't really have, you know, hey, I have an interest here, for sure. On the other side, though, you have the interest of the applicant, the person who has received the permit, the one who has expended money to make changes to their building in reliance upon a permit that was not appealed in a timely fashion. What you are suggesting, if this case is a good cause exemption, I suggest to you, you might as well take a big black pen, go find the 30-day thing, and mark it out, because it just doesn't exist in this case. If this case is your good cause exemption, every case is a good cause exemption. There is never going to be a 30-day appeal period. And that means that everyone who gets a permit should never build, because as soon as you start building and someone finds out about it, then you're going to get an appeal, and you've expended money, and all of a sudden, you're in this big fight, and you've lost your, and you could lose your permit, and have to go and undo a whole bunch of work that you've received. It's just fundamentally unfair.
Can you give a little detail from the cases that you've been discussing regarding what did qualify for the law court as a good cause exception?
Well, if you look at Brackett as the key one. Brackett is the case where you have neighbors who are out of town, work began while they were out of town, they came back in town, saw that the work was being done, they immediately complained, immediately sent a letter to the selectmen saying, "This is all wrong," didn't get a response, and followed up and just filed an appeal. I think within, I don't recall the exact number of days, but it was not a tremendously long time period between first learning and filing their appeal. Not only that, but the permit that was issued pretty much facially violated the ordinance. It wasn't a case of argument, really. I think, if I recall correctly, they expanded the structure, expanded the structure towards the water, which is pretty much big no-no in shoreline zone. And in fact, the third big part of it was that he got a permit for a certain type of structure, started building that, I think he was repairing his initial, repairing his initial structure, started repairing that, realized that there were other problems, and then rather than doing what he should have done, which is go to code enforcement officer and get a new permit, just said, "Well, I don't care, I'm going to just build a bigger structure than what I had in the first place." So permit violation, the permit violated the ordinance, and most importantly, the person didn't have a chance and acted promptly. And you have a similar type of constellation of facts and vials. I can tell you that I've had a case that I thought met the good cause exemption, that went up to the law court and didn't even get a written decision, got a memorandum of decision saying no. And in that case, my client came on Memorial Day weekend, which happened to be the day after the permit, the appeal period had expired. He lived off-site, like in the Brackett cases and Viles, saw that work was being done. The permit itself allowed the permit holder to expand in the setback area to such an extent that my client initially thought the guy was building on his property, and convinced the code enforcement officer to issue a stop work order, because he thought he was building on my client's property. Once they worked out that in fact, although he was actually a whole two inches off of the property line, that stop work order was lifted, and my client filed an appeal. And the law court said, "No, not even worth us issuing a written decision. That does not satisfy the good cause exemption." If that doesn't, and if we're looking at Viles and we're looking at Brackett, that's what you need, and you just do not have anything close to that here.
So just to go back to your initial argument, though, your primary position is that we do not even have authority to recognize a good cause exception in this case. So for example, if the CEO had erroneously granted a permit to build a 12-story apartment complex, and people saw that construction began before the 30-day period, 30-day period passes, no one's appealed, we don't have authority to review that application or the granting of that application. Instead, it has to go to the superior court?
I think what would happen procedurally is, yes, they would come here, you would have to say, "I'm sorry, we don't have the authority to grant you your good cause exemption. We're denying your appeal," and then they have 30 days to appeal to the superior court and get a judge to issue a ruling. I think they can develop their record here, and I think they've done that. They've provided a chronology, and they've shown the facts that indicate what happens, but it's ultimately, it's the court's got to make the decision to grant them the good cause. I mean, that's what they all say, they all say it's a judicial exemption.
And so you're therefore suggesting naturally that the Murphys' remedy would be to go to the superior court with this?
I think that what should happen today is that you should find that it's untimely, and yes, their remedy would then be to go to the superior court with this.
Why don't you talk to us about the standing issue?
Okay, sure.
While you're up.
The standing issue applies to the patio permit, and the patio permit is, the actual work being proposed under that is really quite small. I'm just going to illustrate what work is being done, because I think it's important.
And just before we start, as I said, I know you didn't address this before, so we'll let you get back up to the speaker piece on that, we're not trying to cut you off on that.
So, just to show you what work is being, was approved underneath the permit, there is a portion of driveway here that is being removed and replaced with grass, just so everyone can see. Can everyone see?
There's a photo of this, right, in the handout?
There is a photo in the handout. Maybe we'll do, that will be...
You got me, I don't know that we have an overhead projector, unfortunately, I don't think we do.
All right, well, this is the photo that we're referring to, and I'll just come right up.
And that's in the materials that have already been produced to us, correct?
Yes, that's right. In fact, this is the, that's the revision to the permit that shows what work was approved as the permit was amended. So as you can see, if you look on the bottom of the picture, you'll see that there are two sort of, two edges, two ends of the U of the driveway, one of which has Xs through it. The Xs represent pavement that was existing and under the permit is going to be removed, okay? On the other side, you'll see a area that's kind of behind the structure that has some Xs out on it. Then there's actually a piece of pavement that's flat with the ground that has been removed as well. And in addition to removing it, some additional pavement was replaced in the same location, but less, if that makes sense. If you have a pavement area that was, and I forget the exact dimensions, so I'll just throw 15 by 10, what was replaced was 12 by 8, or something like that. So it's a smaller replace, the pavement that was replaced is smaller than what was there, what was removed.
And that's against the house.
That's right against the house. That is the area that is right against the house, all within the existing footprint of the impervious surface. And then the last, well, actually, two more changes. From that place that was removed, and most of that pavement was removed, by the way, from that area that was removed, you'll see a series of Xs leading down to something called an existing patio, existing deck and patio. That is actually a sort of steps that go down to a patio. Those steps were being removed as part of the permit as well. And then the last thing proposed under this permit, you'll see a series of Os that goes along the line, and in the right, it says junction between rear property line and expired paper road. You'll see that those Os go along that dotted line. Those Os actually represent a rock retaining wall, an erosion control measure, okay? So that is the work that is proposed underneath the patio permit. Now, almost all of that work, with the exception of the removal of the driveway, is on the other side of the house from the Murphys. The Murphys cannot see it, there is no way for them to see it. The only thing they can see is the pavement that was removed from the driveway. But even irrespective of that, I don't think I've ever heard an argument, I don't think there can be an argument, as to how any of that proposed work causes any harm to them at all.
Although, under that argument, wouldn't we be in the situation where any abutter or there would be no one that would ever have standing to challenge any decision from the code enforcement officer permitting work done within the 75-foot setback?
No, I disagree with that, actually.
How would, how would there, anyone ever have standing to challenge a situation like this? It sounds like you're saying no one ever would.
Well, I think that it depends upon the nature of the work that's being done, you know, if you're, which is actually, I mean, it's quite substantial difference. If, let's say, they were going to build a house in that area, most likely, any abutter who lives to the side of them is going to be able to complain about views, loss of views, aesthetics, you know, issues like that. The issue here really isn't so much, is really more of, look at what's being done... The issue here really isn't so much, is really more of, look at what's being done, and then, you know.
So, let me more articulately phrase this. So, let's just assume that there is a violation of the Shoreland zoning ordinance, just for the sake of this discussion here. If that violation is not visible to an abutter, your argument is that no one would have standing to challenge?
No. I don't, that, that's taking it further than what I'm saying. I mean, my argument is, quite literally, predicated on the specifics of this application. Okay? Because I understand that there can be situations where you can do something that's not visible, but that causes harm to an abutter because of increased traffic, that causes harm to an abutter because of increased noise, causes harm because of aesthetics, but that's the visibility thing. But there are lots of other ways in which you can cause harm to an abutter, even if it's not necessarily visible.
So I guess my concern is that the point from my perspective of the, all of the Shoreland, I shouldn't say all of the Shoreland zoning ordinance, but portions of the Shoreland zoning ordinance is protection of the, the adjacent water body. And that is what, the harm that is incurred in some sense when there is construction that's close to the water body. So here, if no one can actually see the construction that's occurring near the water body, the argument is in effect that no one has standing to challenge it, even if, let's imagine that there's a parking lot built there, no one else can see it, you have runoff going into the water.
Well, you see, that, you've just answered my argument. I mean, you're making my argument for me, because if there's a parking lot, there's gonna be traffic. Traffic immediately causes, I mean, I'm not-
Let's go with tennis court instead.
A tennis court is gonna cause traffic, because people are gonna be traveling to the tennis, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be, I'm, I'm quite, I understand where, where you're coming from, and I, and I, and I respect that. But you really need to look at the specifics of this proposal. We're not saying, and we are not making, I'm not making a broad-based, you can't see it, you can't argue it, no way.
You're saying in this instance, the harm is so small that...
I don't understand what it is.
Can we talk about cases in which particularized injury can flow from harm to the general public or the environment at large?
It can't.
Can you talk about that a little?
Sure, it has to be particularized. That, that's the nature of the injury, is that it has to be particularized. You have to show that you have some injury that is in some way distinguishable from the public at large. In fact, that's the, I don't remember how you said, neark a guard or mangling the person's name. But basically, they said, they were, they were arguing about parking lot, but they were not abutting the property, and they said, "Well, you know, it's gonna cause increased traffic." But they didn't have particularized injury, because they were just an undifferentiated member of the general public and couldn't show that it would harm them in particular. Now, that's really what you have to show. You have to show that there's a particular harm for the person who is appealing. And a butter does have a lower standard. It's very true. And that's, that's why I'm not making, arguing for a broad argument here. My argument rises and falls on the specific facts of this case. You know, you could, you start spinning hypotheticals and change something even a little bit, and I, and it probably would, would change things enough to make there be standing. It's just, when you look at the work that's done here...
So, you, to argue your side a little more than to flip it around here, is that here, the patio is of such a small extent that, A, it's not visible, and B, any runoff impact that might impact surrounding abutters is such that the harm is so miniscule that there's no standing?
Well, not to the Murphys. I mean, if, if the runoff were, and that, that would be another example, if this were, if the Murphys were actually next door to the property, and, and for instance, down, down in elevation, so the runoff was actually going over there, and then they could argue that the, the impervious surface would, would cause runoff, then that would create standing. But, you know, the other thing is, and I think this is really the important thing about this case, the runoff really isn't the issue here either, because all of this pavement, except for the patio up in front, was all pre-existing. And even the patio that's been replaced, is replaced in exactly the same location as the grandfathered impervious surface. It's not new. So, when you, you look at standing, you look and say, "Okay, here's the project, this is what's changing, and this is how it harms or, or has potential for harm." All we're doing is, is actually making the property less non-conforming, because we're ripping up impervious surface. They aren't down, I mean, even if the runoff could somehow be a harm, that's for someone else, not the Murphys, who are on the other side of the property and uphill. So that's, that's why you're not standing. And then the second part of the standing issue as well is that I think if you look at all of their arguments, and all that they're claiming that's done wrong, they haven't claimed that we can't do what we got a permit to do. So even if you accept all of their arguments as correct, and let's take the 75-foot setback, even if they're right, which they are not, but even if they were, we're allowed to take up impervious surface and make the property less non-conforming. We're allowed to do it, even if it's within the 75-foot setback. That's all we're doing. They haven't issued any argument that if they are right on, requires that you reverse the permit. So, you know, where is the harm? So I, I just don't see that they're standing here and ask that you, on the second permit, you find that there's no standing and you deny the appeal. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Just for the record, Attorney Wall is here to answer any questions the board may have from the town perspective.
Okay.
Bruce, I have a couple of questions, I guess, for you. Just going back to the issuance of, of building permits generally, those have to be posted, those permits have to be visible, at least my understanding is they have to be visible once the construction starts. Is that correct?
There's no requirement under the zoning ordinance to post it, but we generally do. There's no actual requirement.
Okay. So, okay, so-
We do, we do, we do put our permits online, and we update them every Monday.
Okay. But as far as posting the, the physical permit, you know, at the location of the construction, that's not a requirement of the town?
It's not a requirement. It's, it's something that-
Okay.
We ask them to do.
Okay. Do we know in this case, maybe this is a question for, for the Murphys or, or for the Livingston's, was the permit posted when construction started?
No, no, it was not.
I think we can resolve, I'll speak real quick relative to the standing issue, and then I'd like to address a couple issues regarding timing. But I think we can resolve the standing issue very easily, because there's a big fact which is being missed in all this, and, and Chairman, I did warn you that this would come up relative to standing argument. There is a right-of-way that is, lies between the Livingston property and the Atlantic Ocean. And I think that's depicted on several of the plans that you have before us, before you, I think it's called Surfside Avenue, which is, and there are times when I do agree with Attorney Schumadin, and we have been against each other in other cases, I agree with them, that it's certainly a paper street, and I would agree with them, that the town of Cape Elizabeth is, did not accept it, it's an unaccepted way, but in no means did the right-of-way disappear relative to the, those people own lots in that particular subdivision. And I think it's, I think most people know the case law these days, that if you are a law owner in a subdivision, you have the rights to all ways and paths laid out in that subdivision. Those do not go away, and the Murphys do have a right to that right-of-way. That argument was indicated in the, in their appeals, in which, and that's part of the issue with respects to this permit, was, which was already mentioned, that the boulders were initially planned to be placed in the right-of-way. It's my understanding that there's been an amended filing, although I would submit to you that the paper scratch survey that was provided on the patio plan is not a proper survey. I've yet, we've yet to seen a proper survey relative to the patio plan, so I wouldn't be able to comment on whether this new proposed movement of the boulders is now out of the right-of-way. In addition, what was something that was not even in the initial permit filing was the respect with the amount of fill that was going in back there. I believe there's something along the lines of about 12 truckloads, which have since been dumped. Again, I provided you with some photos, and we're not talking about a small little project where we're removing a little bit of cement and replacing it. As you can see, it was quite an extensive project, which is continuing, ongoing today. And there's some concern with respects to that fill also encroaching within the right-of-way. And again, the Murphys have a right to that right-of-way. They can see this patio, they can see the work being performed, so that it's not invisible to them, and thus, they, they have standing on, in this particular matter.
Can I ask, is, is what you're saying, that the work that was being done at the property under the patio, what I'm gonna call the patio permit?
Yep.
Including the boulders and some of the fill that was placed on the property, is within the boundary of what is shown as Surfside Avenue, a paper street on this plan?
That is correct. And in fact, there is a photo in which you can see, and I don't know if the boulders are there yet, but you can see a pin, and then again, you can see the, the fill going beyond that, that pin. But I would, what I would present to you-
Talking about this picture?
I believe-
No.
Which one? This one? The last, second to last?
That's it. It's this one?
Okay. So, can I ask another question on that? Surfside Avenue is a paper street. Do, are the Murphys claiming that they have any rights in that road that differ from those of the general public?
Yes.
And what are those rights, and how are they different?
I would submit to you that the general public has no rights to Surfside Avenue. Those, 'cause again, it was an unaccepted way by the town of Cape Elizabeth. The only people who have rights to Surfside Avenue, I think that's quite a few people, hence the reason why I think we have such a large audience here to this evening. And again, I don't really wanna get into that argument, but it's those people who live in the subdivision who have rights to Surfside Avenue.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you speak, ma'am. Give him a chance.
So, so again, I think in terms, and another area where I agree with Attorney Schumadin is that with respects to abutters and neighbors, there's a very little, there's a very low threshold with respects to proving that you've been harmed in some way. It doesn't necessarily have to be economic harm, you know, it can be however they may be impacted. And in this case, what we're concerned about, and what we're concerned about with respects to this, the entirety of this case, is that what we have is, is what we deem to be a non-conforming structure. And, and this is where it gets at the, the heart of Attorney Schumadin's argument, which is, "Well, you know, it's, you know, everything's fine here, and they're actually doing good things." And, and that's not, that's not what the zoning board is tasked with. What you're tasked with is making sure that the procedures and restrictions are followed and followed correctly, and that the code enforcement officer is also following those procedures. And when you have a non-conforming structure and work is being performed, then under your zoning ordinance, that has to go before the zoning board of approval. And in addition, the zoning board of approval can then make determinations relative not to whether the, whatever's being done is, is meeting the setbacks to the greatest practical extent. That's language in your ordinance.
Setting aside the kind of substance regarding the non-conforming, the, the non-conformity of the property, which I don't think we're getting to yet.
Right.
I guess what I'm still struggling with is getting a handle on how the injury that is suffered by the Murphys from the patio permit is particularized to them, as opposed to something that injures a large group of people and therefore is not particularized.
I guess, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that question unfortunately with another question, which is, if, if that's what the board is gonna hold, then, then no one, when anybody encroaches into a right-of-way, and number one, I would argue that that's another violation of the permit, because you have to have right title and interest to the property, and the bounds of their property don't even extend into that right-of-way. Without right title and interest, you can't do any work in that right-of-way.
So, I wanna touch on what you just mentioned there. So you're discussing construction occurring within the right-of-way, but what's before us on the appeal today is the granting of the application. And that application, as it's drafted, as, as it was put together, my understanding is, does not depict it being built within the right-of-way.
But it is.
So that seems like-
Hence, our only remedy is the-
What? So that's a different violation than the granting of the application. So if an application is filed to build something at a particular location, and that is granted, and then someone builds in a completely different location, that initial grant of the application might have been well and good, that's all fine. It's the violation that it seems like at that point, the CEO needs to go out and say, "Yes, this is being built improperly," and render a different decision, that it's being built in a completely different location on someone else's land, and if the CEO refuses to make that decision, at that point, that is what is then appealed to us.
Well, I think that's, that's what's part of all of this, because these issues have already been brought up to the code enforcement officer, and it, and some, in this instance, he's decided to take no action.
But what's before us today is just the application for the permit.
You don't have an accurate plan, though, which again, gets into the entirety of the substance of all this. But I believe the, at least with the respects to, with the respects of this particular patio permit, I don't even think the right-of-way is depicted on that plan.
Well, I, good point. I wanna, I gotta, I'm a visual person. I gotta, I've got pictures, I got maps, I got decks, I got patios, I need an orientation. So, can someone, I've got, for example, this picture with that patio, where is it?
I think that goes to my question, too, which, you know, to jump on that-
That patio is not-
Can someone talk to me about where this stuff is that is allegedly in Surfside Avenue, and what evidence you have that there is an encroachment into what you're claiming is the source of the Murphy's particularized injury?
Sir-
Because I don't have that information.
That deck is not a part of this appeal here today.
Okay, that's fine. I'd just like to know where it is on this map. Anyone?
Probably see a lot of these people back here in October, but that, that is in, I would submit, although there might be a rebuttal to this, but I would submit that that deck is right dead center in the-
It's in the right-of-way?
Surfside right-of-way. It's a 50-foot right-of-way, which-
Yeah, I see the right-of-way. I'm just, again, just trying to get a lay of the land.
But if, in terms of speaking, and then, and actually, that picture with the deck shows, it's a, it's an older photo, it shows before the construction begins, you know, the Livingston's house up to the left. Again, what I would, what I would submit to you is, is the photo with the boundary pin, and then it shows, I believe, the rocks, a part of the retaining wall, as well as the fill coming into the right-of-way. And then, and then I think there's a clearer picture of the, of the, the rocks and the, and the fill.
And just to clarify, so there's a, there's a patio, and there's a deck. They're two different structures, correct?
Yes.
The pad, the patio is attached to the building, the deck is not attached to the building and is farther away from the building.
That's correct.
And the issue you're raising is the deck, but the application is for the patio, right?
No, our issue is not the deck. Our, again, our issue is with respects to the, a permit that was issued on-
I understand, I understand, I'm not, I'm not-
Right, okay.
I apologize for my, my, my choice of language there, 'cause I'm not attempting to get you to concede anything here. What, what you're talking about as being built within the Surfside Avenue paper street is the deck, not the stone patio.
It's the, the retaining wall and then the spillover of the, of the, of the fill and everything.
So the boulders?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That is sitting on essentially the, it's sitting on the, I don't know how to say, 'cause I don't have a-
We believe it's-
Yeah, but that's sitting on the inside of the, of the Surfside Avenue paper right-of-way?
We don't believe that to be accurate, and again, because no survey was ever done.
Okay, well-
Do you have any measurements? Do you have any documentation that indicates that the location of the boulders or the overflow fill is within Surfside Avenue?
Couple of problems with that. When we met with the code enforcement officer, as well as a, I believe, a construction representative of the Livingston's, when the Murphys met with them, that very discussion came up. It was asked whether or not we could conduct surveys, take height measurements, and things of that nature. When we met with the code enforcement officer, as well as, I believe, a construction representative of the Livingston's, when the Murphys met with them, that very discussion came up. It was asked whether or not we could conduct surveys, take height measurements, and things of that nature. The representative for the Livingston's at that time said, "I can't authorize any of that." So, it does create somewhat of a problem in that we weren't able to access the property. There was, in the initial application, though, I do believe it shows, I mean, there's some measurements on it, and based on the measurements, at least as far as we could tell, was that the erosion control retaining wall was, in fact, in the right-of-way. And that was based on, you know, looking at the, again, without giving any credence to that, the 109 feet with respects to mean high watermark and things of that nature, based on, you know, field, if you-
Okay. If I could just, I'm looking at another map that was provided, I think, by Mr. Livingston to Mr. Smith on September 19th, 2012, at 8:42 a.m., which seems to show erosion control boulder wall, which looks to be bordering the right-of-way. Is that, I'm not asking you, I guess I'm looking for the Livingston's of the council. Sure, of course.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you, if you don't mind, just going up to the mic there and take it, yours.
Yeah, this shows the amendment. We talked about how the plan or the permit was amended, and the amendment concerned the retaining wall. So, what we did was we pulled it back. And what you'll see here on this plan is a dotted line, and that dotted line is meant to depict the line of that paper street. And then you have the boulders on the other side of that, so on the Livingston's property.
So, the record before us is that the application, as amended and filed for and granted, involves a retaining wall that runs within the property boundary-
Exactly.
At this location.
Yes. And we believe that, as constructed, it has been constructed in conformance with that.
Which is a separate issue, I would argue. But the issue for us on the application is that a wall granted, a retaining wall that's granted at this location, is that permitted and is there standing?
Well, and under the permit, it is granted to be outside of the right-of-way.
Do you have anything that establishes that it is outside the right-of-way, other than this hand-drawn drawing that shows a dotted line that represents the right-of-way and some circles that represent the boulder wall?
Well, I think you're asking two questions, unfortunately. I have this, and I think that this does answer your question, in that what is permitted-
Who prepared that?
This is the contractor prepared this. What the question under the permit is, is what is permitted. This shows a line, and it shows a line meant to depict something on the face of the earth. And that line, as depicted on the face of the earth, is the boundary of the right-of-way. And it shows the boulders in relationship to that line. And that is what's important here. It's not, you know, this is not meant to say that this is X number of feet from some landmark. It's meant to say that it is on the other side of that line.
How close do you think it is to that line in terms of feet?
It is, it-
Close.
It's close. It may be right on the line, but it's-
The reason I'm asking the question is because this picture shows the fill going over that wall substantially. And so, to my mind, if that rock wall is essentially the border of the right-of-way, then the wall, the fill appears to be encroaching.
Well, can I answer that question? Because that's actually a separate question. We need to remember that this is an easement. This is not a fee. It's not like they have a road that they all own. They have an easement. Main law is pretty clear on what easements, you know, you've got the servient estate, who's the person who holds the easement, who gets to go over and pass and repass, or actually, the dominant estate, excuse me, I messed it up. But the dominant estate, who has the easement, who gets to pass and repass. And then you have the servient estate, who's the one who owns the land underneath it. The person who owns the land underneath it can do anything they want to in that land, just so long as they are not impeding the ability of the other person to use it. Now, the only things in here-
Can you relate that to the particularized injury standard, such that these impacts are or are not sufficient to establish particularized injury to an abutter?
They simply are. They are not insufficient to establish particularized injury to a holder of the easement, certainly, because the only thing-
They are not, did you say?
They are not. And because, and it's very simple, the only things in there that actually impact the ability of someone to pass and repass, which is what the owner of the land underneath easement may not do. They may not build a wall to prevent someone from passing and repassing. That would be, that would harm the owner of the easement. They could do fill. They could, you know, make the path easier for people to walk on. They could put grass down. As long as it's not preventing the person from using the easement, they're allowed to use that land any way they want to. The only things in there that could even conceivably affect the ability of someone to pass and repass are things that were there long ago, and that are not part of what's the changes that are proposed under this permit application. In fact, if you look at the permit application and what is proposed, it's removing stairs. It's removing barriers that actually prevent people from passing and repassing.
To the extent it's relevant, just because of the fact that you brought up the fact that this is an easement instead of a fee, simple, who is the actual owner of this region? But this is all we have in the record.
Yes, I know.
Who is the actual owner of this region here?
I would suggest that the Livingston's are. And to the extent that there is any dispute about that, then the ZBA does not have power to decide that dispute, and it's civil action.
I guess I'm, you know, going back to the standing issue on the patio permit, which is what I'm trying to get on board with, one way or the other. I hear where you're coming from in terms of particularized injury, in terms of the patio work. I hear where you're coming from in terms of the boulder wall. Knowing that this is a really low standard, the fill within that right-of-way or easement area is still seeming to me like it might meet that standard. And so, I'm looking for some more kind of discussion on that particular issue.
Sure. I mean, I think that what we're talking about in terms of the fill, in terms of the standard, is the particularized injury, which means some harm to some right that they have. The right that they have under that easement is to pass and repass along that property. I think the issue is really, how does putting fill and actually, I mean, fill, once you put fill in, actually makes the surface more, the surface flatter. It's easier to walk on. How is that harming their ability to pass and repass? It's not like, I mean, you know, if the Livingston's had proposed to put a wall, even a wall that, you know, like this high, maybe the same height as Stonehenge, and this is Spinal Tap, that wall would constitute some barrier. I think they would have an argument that that's particularized injury. But we're not talking about any sort of wall here. We're talking about lawn and fill that makes the lawn flatter. And, I mean, I'd love to hear what the injury is. I just don't understand how you can say that, "I'm harmed because now I can walk easier and don't have to trip." I mean, I'm sorry to be flippant about it. I just don't really, I'm having a hard time understand, I mean, if there's an actual harm there or a potential for harm, then they have standing. I just, and, you know, we're not arguing that. It's just, how do you get to a point where, yeah, it's fill, but it's, we're entitled to put fill on our land, as long as we're not interfering with the easement? How does fill interfere with the easement?
On this picture?
Yes.
Follow-up on some of John's questions. Is the right-of-way behind that deck?
You mean, where on the face of the earth does the paper street, such as it is-
Right.
-exist?
And the understanding that you're not a surveyor, and we're not talking with complete precision here, but just generally-
No, and I'm not, and, you know, I think, my understanding, such as it is, is that the right-of-way or the paper street would be on either side of that, the boundaries would be on either side of that deck.
On either side?
Yeah, but the deck is not at issue in this case.
Understood. I'm just trying to orient myself.
So, there are pavers that are kind of hard to see.
That is the patio that was-
A separate patio from the-
That is a separate patio. If you look at-
Not the patio that's directly part of the application that's before us. But this is a separate patio, and the argument, it seems, is that that separate patio sits within the paper street.
All right. There are a couple of things about that, though. Now, if you look at this drawing, which John gave me, Mr. Thibodeau gave me a second ago.
John's okay.
All right. That patio is this structure down here, which, so is this, that's, you see the, excuse me, it says existing deck and patio. The patio that you're referring to, those little pavers, is this one right here. There used to be stairs to that patio down from the house. The stairs, as part of this permit, were being removed. The patio can't form particularized injury in this case, because the patio pre-existed the permit, pre-existed the Livingston's purchasing the property, and has been there for time immemorial, as far as I can tell.
And that is not the patio that is subject to the application?
The changed patio is up next to the house. That is correct.
Right underneath the edge of the house, right there?
Let me make sure.
Sorry to, sorry to make-
First, open, then replace. Shows X open, then replace.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, that is the one next to the house, is the-
I feel like we keep going around in circles a little bit, but with respects to the particularized injury, and again, it's a very low threshold. The Murphys have a right-of-way, and again, whether it's a visual impact or anything along those lines, it's not just whether it's impeding their right-of-way or anything like that. It's, the threshold is how is the improvements that are being done impacting the neighbors? And what I submit to you is, and what we've maintained all along, the real harm here is the process and procedure that went about in terms of approving these permits was wrong. And so, before the board, if the board today is going to say, "You know what? This is the standard that Cape Elizabeth is going to set. This is what we are going to allow." And to the extent that permits are issued, and proper surveys are not made, and, for example, the lot coverage was never even determined, and we would submit to you that the lot coverage exceeded the 20 percent, if these things are not going to be followed and are not going to be presented and not going to be in the record, that's the harm here. And the reason why Murphys have standing to bring this case is because they are the neighbors abutting this property, and certainly have an interest in the work that's being done and how those permits were issued.
So, the harm is the process that was followed, not what's actually happening on the property right now?
A little bit of both. With respects to the, again, there's the encroachments into the right-of-way. Two is the first appeal, which is the height issue, which definitely impacts them.
No, but on the second one, on the patio one. I mean, the patio one is the standing issue with respect to-
Correct.
Do they have standing? Are you saying it's the process? I mean, when the patio is finished, it's going to be smaller.
Yes, I think the letter from Mike Morris speaks to that. Granted, we don't agree with everything he had to say, but he indicated how he had some real trouble with the fact that procedures, the town of Cape Elizabeth ordinance was not followed in this particular instance, and certain procedures were done. And that's where I submit to you that, that's where the town, you as the zoning board and appeals have to kind of look at that in terms of how this ultimately impacts the municipality.
So, how this then becomes a particularized injury, as opposed to just a general injury to the public from violation of procedures, is the fact that it's abutters who are raising the issue of the failure?
Because it's the neighbors who have abut the property, whoever right-of-way in front of the property, who are being impacted by the work that's being performed there, and have an interest in the work that's being performed there. And so, for example, if it went through the proper procedure, arguments could be made relative to, are the, you know, are setbacks being met to the greatest practical extent that they can be? Are the surveys proper? You know, are the height establishments correct? You know, are we impacting our natural resources?
Although, we're just talking about the patio and the retaining wall.
Yeah, I agree, but yes.
So, we'll set aside the-
And again, to use Attorney Schumadin's word, I don't mean to be flippant, but, you know, what's a minor issue to him is certainly not a minor issue to the Murphys. We wouldn't be bringing this appeal otherwise.
Can we go back to the, I know, sorry. Back to the issue with regard to the first permit? And we talk a little bit more about the timeliness slash good cause exception with regard to the timeliness of the appeal. We've got a timeline that indicates that the Murphys had actual notice of the building permit within, well within, the time to appeal, and did not file an appeal timely. So, to get around that, we need to look to a good cause exception or other exception that you might raise, and I'm wondering what information you can provide on that point.
Certainly. Couple of points related to that. Number one, I think Attorney Schumadin rightfully pointed out that the vial's decision was a decision which the zoning board, the zoning board itself, did find that the appeal, that appeal that was filed after the time provided anyways, was a timely appeal. The Superior Court upheld that, and then, yes, the Supreme Court then upheld that. So, I do think you're within your authority to make such a finding, and it continue, and to be upheld by the Superior Court.
Thanks.
Two, with respects to whether or not this rises to the standard, yes, the Murphys were here. It's not analogous to the cases in which you had somebody who is, one of them in which they were living in Florida and didn't know until they found out. But what's troubling in this instance is that when the Murphys, and again, certainly, they can speak more to this, and if you want to ask some questions, but when they approached the code enforcement officer with inquiries about the permit and some concerns they had, and that's what's troubling here, and, you know, and certainly, if we have to address that on appeal, we will, but the fact that they were kind of steered away, they weren't informed about an appeal process, they weren't informed about a procedure, and it was only upon their continued investigation and continued inquiries relative to the code enforcement officer, is when they determined, when they found out that, you know, oh, my God, we've got to do something. I would submit to you that the first time that was mentioned was on the August 1st meeting. And it was at that point where the code enforcement officer did tell them that there isn't a procedure. There isn't appellate procedure.
Is there a copy of the building permit in the file? I don't have it in front of me. Do you have one?
I do have one.
And did the Murphys see the building permit on the 17th? Is that right?
It was on the 17th, when which they went to the town office.
Is the appeal period noted on the building permit?
What's that?
Is the appeal period noted on the building permit?
No.
Were the Murphys aware that there's a local ordinance?
Upon their investigation, I think, I think you saw, you saw in their material that they did quite a bit of research. They're both engineers, and so, they looked at both the ordinance and state law. And it was, again, that was, well, that was after the August 1st meeting. And in addition, they met with an attorney, not me, but then ultimately did retain me. But even prior to retaining me is when they filed their appeal.
Were they unaware of the 30-day appeal period?
Oh, yes. Well, they weren't aware that there was any 30-day appeal period until after August 1st, which was the meeting that they had with Bruce Smith, and as well as one of the contractors.
And I just want to raise a couple of facts here, make sure that we're all on the same page and agree on all of them. Everyone agrees that the permit was issued on June 22nd, 2012?
Yes.
And everyone agrees that the Murphys were aware construction was beginning prior to July 23rd, correct?
Prior to-
There- And is there any- And is there any dispute that the Murphys contacted the code enforcement, code enforcement officer prior to that time but did not have an appointment until after that, until July 24th? Is there any dispute on that?
I could have probably, there's a code enforcement officer, since he didn't want to get out.
Do you dispute that point? So, so the undisputed facts here are basically, the permit was issued June 22nd, there was some level of notice at some level prior to July 23rd. The code enforcement officer was contacted prior to July 23rd, but no meeting with the code enforcement officer happened until after July 23rd.
That, that is correct, although I am an attorney, so I guess I'm just a little nervous about when you said there was notice provided. I don't know what kind of notice you'd refer it to.
So, let me, let me pull the word notice out of that conversation then.
That's what happens when you have me up here instead of the Murphy. Sorry.
There's no doubt that they had, there's no dispute that they had actual notice on the 16th, right? When they sent an email to the code enforcement officer saying that they were aware of the construction, you're not-
They did not-
They had actual notice.
They had, they had actual notice that something was being done. They hadn't seen the permit at that point, and I think that's where, but they did see the permit the next day, which was on the 17th.
And the Murphy's position is they were unaware of the window of time for the appeal until after the appeal period had expired.
That's correct.
And I guess, I wanna ask a practical question, which is, I guess Bruce is directed at you, were the, were the Murphys made aware of the, the appeal process in terms of what the town's appeal process is, or the timeline around that?
I don't believe-
Would, would you or your office have, I guess, did you, you know, tell them that? Or, or how else could they be made aware of that, otherwise, I guess, is?
During, course of a conversation, we oftentimes get into, into ways by which the ordinance will, you know, the, the way things are done, but I mean, it's not, it's not common practice to, to make that part of a, a, a permit application or, or a conversation after necessarily.
It's not information we, we volunteer, or, I mean-
I would volunteer if, 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 if I thought it was something that needed to be talked about, yes. I wasn't, I mean, on the 24th, when we had the conversation, it was after, if it was that-
The horse is out of the barn on the 24th. It's, I guess, but, you know, I, I didn't know if there were some side conversations that they may have had with your office.
I don't recall that there was.
So, there, there's no set procedure that if you receive an inquiry that you automatically inform people that there's a particular window of time with, within which to-
No, because at the time, I had no idea that, that it was an issue. Had I been aware of there's an issue, and, and they asked what they could do, I would certainly inform them based on the ordinance that, that there's a procedure that they could follow, but I didn't see an issue at that time.
On the, the initial timeliness issue, are, are we prepared to close the, the record and then have the debate, and then probably reach out to the town attorney?
Yeah.
We wanna ask if anyone else has any comments that-
Does anyone else wanna comment specifically on the issue of the timeliness of the permit? I know we're doing this piecemeal, but I think it's probably the most efficient way to proceed.
Just on the timeliness or the standing, not the, the other substantive issues? All right. Go to the podium.
Your name, sir?
Holy Nine Pilot Point Road. They brought it up before and asked for a meeting with the code enforcement officer, which was not scheduled until after, so they had no chance. I mean, that's right away, by the time they can even meet with him to ask the questions, they're excluded from the process, and that's just completely unfair if that's allowed to, to stand.
I, I just have a question with respect to, my name is Sheila Mayberry. I live in the Trendy Point neighborhood. I have a question, I think one of you raised it, with respect to a personal right as, as an abutter versus questions of the setback protecting the waterfront, whether or not that, it might be a personal right as a abutter, but it's also a, a, it's also a concern that the town has to protect the waterfront. So, my, my question is, are we talking about a timeline that has to do personally with the Murphys, or are we talking about the timeline, or is there a timeline where anyone can appeal an issue that has to do with the protection of waterfront? And, and I would suggest that because this, we're talking about waterfront property, and we're talking about how we have worked as this town to protect waterfront property, that this should not be limited to a timeline of an abutter who may have filed something late, but the issue remains one for the entire town because of our value that we put in and the work we put into the zoning ordinance. So, I respectfully ask you to consider that when you make your decision about whether or not they're standing based on the timeline. The other thing is, with respect to notice, apparently there have been a lot of permits granted, I'm not quite sure, I think the town of Cape Elizabeth did, which actually says display this card of work on principal frontage of, frontage of work. So, there have been at least two, maybe three, that actually say display, and apparently none have been displayed, from what I hear. So, with respect to notice of the actual work being performed, I'm not quite sure there has been. And respect to the standing issue with regard, not to the timeliness issue, but I'm up here anyway, since the Shore Acres Association has an easement granted to it in 1992, and is responsible for that roadway, the upkeep of that, we, we are actually obligated to make sure the roadway all along that area is kept up. We need to put gravel in where, where there's an actual road. So, when we have construction that is falling over into that roadway, we are actually responsible for it. And later on, when the, when the Shore Acres Association talks about that, I don't think it's in this tonight, I mean, what do we do with the deck that's in, that's in the roadway? Do we pick it up? I know that might be a civil issue, but this is something for you to consider when, when you think about the impact that this has. So, from a standing point of view, there is a particularized issue with respect to what we need to do, and the Murphys are part of that. So, you can extend, you can extend it and extend it in that way, but if you wanna find a low threshold for standing in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, I'm asking you this, just because I think you need to understand the importance, I'd like all the people in the neighborhood to stand up. This is the support you have for protecting our easement and our waterfront. Thank you.
I'd like to say one thing on these pictures. I believe these pictures, these photos were taken prior to the movement of the rocks, and that's why you see the, the amount of fill in front of them. The rock wall had been moved under the, under the, the revision to the building. These pictures were taken when the rock wall was first placed within the right-of-way, or would supposedly be in the right-of-way, and they've been moved since then.
How far back has it been moved?
What's that? I'm just, just-
Is, is that accurate?
But wait, so what you're saying, Bruce, is that this rock wall is actually further back here now?
It's been-
Towards the hall?
I haven't been able to verify, but, but, but this picture was taken when the original rock wall was put in. Has been, and it's, I guess Livingston can, can speak to whether it's a different location.
Is that, is that accurate? Again, this gets to the whole process and procedure here, but apparently, in light of all this, a lot of all this hubbub, I believe an amended application of permit was submitted, we haven't seen that, and it was apparently granted, so I don't know if a new permit was issued. And, and, and so I'm not, I'm not, and I, I don't know if the, the rocks have been moved or, or not.
When was the new permit issued?
Excuse me?
When was the new permit issued?
There wasn't a new permit issued, this, this was revision to the previously approved.
When did that happen?
September 19th. There's a, there's a permit updated in the file.
Okay.
So, so all the pictures are, are pre-move, I mean, as far as you know, all of your pictures?
As, as, as far as I know, but it's my understanding that the, the fill is still there, and I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that, again, all of this was done-
And then this was kind of to depict the post-move?
Apparently.
Am I correct in my understanding that there's another matter related to this that's gonna be on next month as well?
Fortunately, I, I'm not involved in that either, but the Shore Acres Association is, I don't believe, are a little bit displeased with what's been happening in the, in the right-of-way as well.
I guess I'm still not seeing the revised permit from September 19th. And I wasn't aware of that when we were talking about the timeliness issue earlier.
Although this is just for the porch, not the, the patio, changing-
Okay, okay, okay.
My synonyms here, but-
Never mind, I'm all set then on timeliness.
Sir, I'm sorry, sorry for the, the interruption.
My name's Ian Nielsen, I live in the neighborhood, fairly new to Cape Elizabeth. I, I wanted to go on record and, and ask a question, and that is, why aren't building permits posted? I think all of this would have been quite easily resolved had it been posted, you know, is there, could we have that done in the future perhaps?
It's not a requirement of the current, current ordinance, as far as I know, so there would need to be an amendment to the ordinance to require that.
Is that accurate, Bruce? I know you said it before, but just for the record, there's, there's no requirement, to the best of your knowledge, that it be posted, correct?
That's correct, and certainly one could approach the council or, to get that change, if, you know, if that's-
Yeah, it's, right or wrong, again, it sounds like it's not in the ordinance. There are other instances, I believe, based on what else has occurred in front of the town council in the past, where certain changes do end up carrying notice, this one doesn't, it sounds like. And right or wrong, that's what we're stuck with.
We only have the tools that we have in our kit here today.
As I said, I'd like to go on record saying that, I think that's wrong, and I think as a citizen, I'd like to support others to suggest that this be done.
Anyone else? Counsel, can I ask a couple of questions on the record?
Do, do we wanna-
Just, yeah.
How does it proceed with closing the factual record and then, do we-
Let me just ask him a couple of questions first. No, and I have those questions as well. Is there, to the best of your knowledge, is there any reason that would, or any prohibition on us going for a sidewalk on one, on one of these, as a ZBA, as the entire board?
Going on a sidewalk?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And is there any prohibition on us continuing a hearing, not necessarily on the entirety of the things that are before us today, but continuing it so that we could do that to get, 'cause I, I get the sense that we're all struggling a lot with, with, with what it looks like. I know I am, and I feel like we're sort of spinning our wheels here. So, are we empowered to continue a hearing?
I think you're allowed to suspend a hearing in order to be able to gain more information, and if that includes a sidewalk, then I think that would be okay.
Thank you. I'd like to make a procedural motion, and that we suspend the hearing on the patio permit, which I believe is 130072, until we have the next regularly scheduled-
I have a couple, I have a couple threshold questions I'd also like to ask of the town attorney.
Oh, absolutely, let's, yeah.
Might obviate our meeting.
Go ahead there.
So, as an initial matter, this, did, did we wanna close the factual record, or how do we normally proceed at this point? Or do we just continue now?
Does anyone else have any comments on, strictly on the, on the notice issue? If not, we'd like to close that. We're not, we're not done, but we have some questions for counsel.
I think I would like at least, before we close it, at least like to have Ms. Murphy say the Murphy's, and again, concerning the stricter comments relative to the-
Okay.
-matter before us, and then we are not in a substantive violation.
Okay.
As far as the notice was concerned, we were told in the fall of 2011 by Sandra Livingston that we would be happy to know that they weren't going to be building up on their house. And we said, I said, oh, I'm so grateful, thank you, that's great. When I went to walk my dogs, and my neighbor said, did you see what was delivered? And they were floor joyous for a second floor, I was quite surprised. So, I went to the town office, and I looked at the site plan. I'm a civil engineer, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, so plans are not foreign to me. I'm not aware of building permits and zoning ordinances, that's not part of what I learned. But I looked at the plan, and I saw very quickly that there were some mistakes. And so I contacted, and my husband and I contacted Bruce, I called on the phone, and on that phone call, on the voicemail, I called the office, they put me to his voicemail. I specifically said on the 17th that I have concerns about what's happening at 29 Pilot Point Road, because the average grade line is just there, and there's no elevation, it's never been fixed to the earth, it's never been tied to a fixed object, and I have other issues that I'm concerned about. Bruce did not call us back, I followed up with an email on the 20th to say, we called you, you haven't returned our call. And the response was, I apologize for not returning your call, I've been real busy, and that's in the appeal package. And then it's just interesting that when we called into the office, that the day that we were scheduled was the day after, the 30th day. So, then whenever approaching our code enforcement officer, I am not an expert on zoning, but I mentioned that the eves are counted on August 1st, I mentioned that patios are, and he told me they're not. Well, they are. So, I'm going to the expert that's supposed to help everybody, and I'm being told something that's out of the ordinance? And so then I'm having to try to figure out, okay, what's true or not? Am I not reading this right? So, I do feel that we did all we could to determine whether or not an appeal was appropriate, and I do believe it was. The survey plans are lacking on both permits, and, I mean, the process has been pretty tough, but I don't feel that we should have, I think on the 17th, or even when Bruce responded on the 20th, he could have let us know that there's an appeal process. On August 1st, I said, so what do we do? What do we do? Do I call the town council? Who can help us with this? And he said, well, there's a process. And I said, well, what's that? And he said, well, you can appeal. And I said, oh, okay, how do I do that? And he said, well, you appeal, and you can appeal, and we have to look and see if there's good standing. That was my first notice, our first notice of that process, so I just needed to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say one-
Yes.
In all due respect- Let me just say, one, in all due respect, I've been a court officer for 24 years, and I think you'll find as citizens of this town contested to my validity in helping them on a daily basis. There wouldn't be any intentional wrongdoing to put you in a spot where you couldn't appeal. If there's a mistake that's been made, I'll admit to it. That's all I have to say, and I feel like I'm on trial here, and until we get to the facts, I think we ought to reserve statements that may be bad for my character.
I'd like to move to close public comment on the standing issue. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Mr. Wall, sorry, I think.
It's quite all right.
I think that Chris has some more questions for you.
So, what are the, so we now understand that there is an updated or amended application for the porch? What implications, if any, does that carry for the appeal on the porch?
Do you mean from the purposes of standing issue?
In the appeal in its entirety for the porch, is the prior granted application in effect null and void and replaced by now this new application that's been granted?
I believe that an application can be amended after it's initially granted. I don't think it initiates the approval, it may create a different timeframe if there's some alteration of the original permit that creates a situation that didn't previously exist, and then parties then have a new period from which to file an appeal, if that were, you know, the timeliness were an issue on that.
Fortunately for this one, at least, the timeliness does not appear to be an issue. I mentioned this just because of the fact that there did appear to be some confusion as to what is the actual plan? Where are the, is the wall being, where was the wall, the application approved with the wall's location? And because of the fact that that did change from the initial application to now the amended application, I just wanted to make sure that the amended application is properly before us to decide whether it was properly granted. Or is the only thing in front of us at this point, the original application, which in many ways is no longer at issue?
I believe procedurally, what you've got here is an amended permit. I believe, if I understand the timeline correctly, that the original permit with regard to, what I'll call the patio permit, was, the original appeal was filed before that alteration was made. It sounds like the appellant's are still pressing their appeal, notwithstanding the fact that an alteration has been made. So it sounds to me as though that's the operative permission, and there's still a challenge to that, even as amended. And that probably be, properly be before the board at this point.
Which then leads to your proposed motion.
Right. I would move, well, let me explain what I'd like to do, and then I'll just move to do that. I think it makes sense to suspend the hearing on the patio permit, so-called patio permit, until the next regularly scheduled hearing, which I believe will be in October, and set up the time for a sidewalk by the ZBA, and I guess any other interested parties, because I think that we would all benefit a lot from actually seeing this. Mr. Schumadin, is, on the patio aspect of this, is anything going on at this time? In other words, the rocks have been moved back, is that correct?
Yes.
And the patio has been put in?
By the land, with a couple of.
By the house?
Yes.
Okay, and the fill has been put in?
Yes.
Okay. Do you anticipate any more work on that aspect of this, within the next month?
I know, I mean, if the board's done, so.
Okay, okay, that's, as far as you guys are concerned, absent some sort of order from the town or something else, that part is done, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you're, I'm not sure if the board needs to have a site visit, but if you are going to have a site visit, I would like to see the board have a sit down around High Tide.
Okay, why?
Because I went out there today, and I looked at this location, they claim this is the mean high water mark, and I looked at the ocean, and it has 30 feet below, or 20 feet below me, and it was near High Tide. And I think that if we're going to get to the substance of this, and we're going to get to the standing issue, I think it would be useful for the board to see just exactly where High Tide fits this essential clip in the property, and just where that is in relationship to the place that they're standing in.
Okay.
My, my personal take on this too, is that maybe we have some more discussion on the standing issue, and see if we can rule on that tonight, given the information that we have in front of us, because my concern would be that, frankly, the fill is, to my mind, the best evidence of standing, and the evidence on that is what it is right now, and I wouldn't want us to do a sidewalk and have the conditions be different than what we have, and have it be less fresh in our minds in terms of what we've gone through tonight in terms of standing.
And I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, but isn't the evidence we have on that right now, that we have pictures, and we have some plans, and the fill may or may not be along that line, but has, regardless, it's been moved back, so the pictures aren't necessarily accurate at this point?
Well, to my mind, even if that wall was moved back, it's, to me, that only indicates that the fill is further within, so, I mean, that kind of actually supports standing even more, and, you know, given the minimal standing requirements.
Okay. I have no problem with that, thoughts from the rest of the board?
I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not sure how that impacts the right-of-way.
The fill?
Yeah, how does that affect anyone's use, you know, or ability to walk through the right-of-way?
You know.
Based upon the pictures that we're all looking at.
Yeah, I mean, the level of particularized injury that's necessary for an abutter or other adjacent user with rights to land is pretty small. I mean, I think there's case law out there that says it's almost nothing. And if you've got fill, you know, you've got one person saying, hey, it makes it easier to walk, you might have another person saying, hey, it doesn't make it easier for me to walk, it's more difficult for me to get around out there. I think that the standard is so low, but that's really a question, I think, for town council.
If you're asking, is that a relatively accurate statement of the standard? It's, all it needs is a relatively minor adverse consequence, is the language that the law court has used. And in the context of building permits, the court often acknowledges that even conceivable injuries are sufficient, for accounting for the fact that the work may not have been done yet, so we don't know exactly whether or not this will have an impact or not. So the court is willing to allow that kind of conceivability as part of the standard. So it's, has been, I think, acknowledged by everybody, it's a relatively low standard for abutters to demonstrate some, at least, minor adverse consequence.
Could I have, make one comment?
Sure.
I think it's important to understand that this area that we're talking about has been utilized by deliveries and former owners for years and years. It's been mowed, it's been maintained, so that they're not doing, going into an area that has not been used for years by the owners of that house. So, you know, and I think that's an issue that the town council can address.
I don't think we want to get into adverse possession discussions tonight, it hasn't been raised before us. I understood your point, but I guess I would still default back to what I said. I think even for the standing issue, I think just having an idea of what it looks like down there is going to be helpful. I agree, I don't think, I don't think the hurdle to show injury is high, in fact, I think it's very small, but that being said, I just, I'm just not comfortable with my understanding of it at this point. So, I would move for us to continue the hearing on the issue of the timeliness of the house permit, continue that today, and that we suspend the hearing on all issues as they relate to the so-called patio permit until such time as we can set up a sidewalk. Mr. Wall, is that something, how, are there requirements that we have for the notice of a sidewalk and that sort of thing?
I'd have to double-check on that, I don't know off the top of my head whether that's true.
Okay, and would you?
Never had a sidewalk in 15 years.
Okay, yeah, you know, I'm not trying to, trust me, I'm not eager to blaze new territory here, but could we, could we ask you to look into that for us? Because I want to make sure that we, if we are, if we do go down this road, that we give proper notice to everyone, and people who are entitled to participate are able to participate.
Certainly.
The procedure that I'm familiar with is, at this meeting, you set the date up, and that's notice, because anybody that's interested is at this meeting.
Okay, well.
In terms of the second part of the decision, have we, and was it just, are we going to allow or continue to do it there?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Schumadin said that for the patio stuff, there's nothing to be done at this point. Right, the patio and the retaining wall stuff, my understanding is that that's done at this point, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
So no, and what are the operations in that issue?
Okay. Well, you know, I move that we proceed that way procedurally, do I have a second on that from anyone? Yes, okay, all in favor? Three of five, it looks like. All right, well, I guess that's the way we're going to proceed. Sir?
I have a quick question.
You have to come up here, you have to come up to the mic, please.
I believe it was said that normally you would make the, set the date certain from this meeting, and if not, you would then have to notice the abutters. So if you're, but in this case, the abutters, I think, may be a little larger than you expect in that it would be basically all of the people who live in Shore Acres.
That is why, that, yes, and that's a concern I have as well.
I didn't want it to come as a surprise.
No, you know, trust me, it's very obvious that this is, this is a hot topic for a lot of people, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to ask Mr. Wall to do a little research on it, because, you know, I think, when we do this, we want it to be productive, and we don't want it to turn into a.
Circus.
Your word, not mine, but it fits well.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well.
So, we want to finish the vote, do the last formal step.
I actually was not quite accurate. Turns out that we need to put grass seed down, as a part of the DPO currently proceeding. Would that be acceptable?
I don't see an issue that, I don't think, I'm assuming that the second part is going to happen the next month, I'm surprised how much grass is going to grow, maybe now, and I think everybody will have to get a layer of this, what's going on.
Well, if both parties are comfortable with that, I don't have any problem, unless anyone else on the board does. Okay.
I don't know. I think, you know, I just keep coming back to, if we're talking about seeding out there.
If it's going to be torn up, it's not going to make any difference one way or the other.
Well, no, I know, but what we're trying to figure out is, what does it look like from a standing perspective at the time of the appeal, right? And the further out we get from that, and the more changes there are, the harder it is to figure that out, right?
Well, you know, if, yes, yes, and if Bruce says that we should set it today, then let's set a, let's set a date now, and let's do it as soon as we can, I don't know how we're going to get you down there.
I know, right? I'll be hopping, you tell me it's easy to get through that dirt.
Before we do that, Chris, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
We had three in favor, and abstaining or opposing?
Opposing.
Opposing as well, so two opposing.
Okay, so the eyes carry eerily, three to two. Why don't we, thoughts on whether we should try to schedule it now, or whether we should go back to the notice issue on the other one? I guess.
I'd rather schedule it now.
Okay. Someone threw a date out. Let me take a look at my calendar.
Mine's in the car. He's got it all packed.
You're not going to get it.
Nope.
Board members generally.
It's Thursday, I got a walking boot.
Okay, so we'll go after Thursday. Your point is well-taken, that we want to get as good an idea of what it can look like as we can, so if we could do this next week.
No, unless it's Tuesday.
Let's do it Tuesday.
Tuesday works, as long as it's prior to Wednesday.
Tuesday is part of it.
That's how I checked.
I'm going to go out now then. That's the quality representation you get here in Cape Elizabeth.
Just for the boards, I'm on seminar next week, so.
Okay, so you unavailable on Saturday?
I'm unavailable.
Okay, all right, well then, why don't we.
And is there a requirement that we provide at least two weeks' notice prior to something like this?
How do you notice it from here, I believe?
Okay.
What was the question?
Do we have to provide two weeks' notice?
No, no, there's continuation.
Because it's a continuation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I believe as long as you, it's notice. The meeting is suspended and carried to the sidewalk.
Got it. How about Tuesday the 9th?
Actually, I can do that.
That's a scintillating business here, guys, I apologize for.
That works for me.
Exactly, right, we don't want to lose the light.
Look at a tide table, let us know when high tide is. Good.
Yes, October 9th.
I got one of those too.
The high tide is 6:13 AM, 6:26 PM.
Of course.
It'll be close in the afternoon.
It's going to be dark.
It's going to be dark, yeah, well, I will need to do it in the late afternoon, and we'll be fairly.
Close enough.
That would probably work better for people who.
Let's see.
Something else to do besides the ZBA.
4:30.
4:30 on the 9th?
Yeah.
We'll meet at, meet at the property, in front of the property, is that acceptable? Is that acceptable to you? Okay. And we will confer with counsel and the interim, and get some guidance on the actual parameters for this. 4:30. All right.
Can I just ask a question? Is there any procedure for filing a party in the interest application on this particular appeal?
Nor am I aware of one either, ma'am.
All right, so we'll.
That doesn't mean that there's not one, it's just that, it's a city area.
So we could file something, and you would consider, we'd consider that as?
What I'm saying, I'm not aware of a party in trust, you know, you have more standing than the other person in the public. You would stop.
I don't know, they're, I think they're having trouble with that issue.
I think all we can say to you is, you can file some sort of objection, and then we'll take it up in the ordinary course. You know, beyond that, I can't say what would happen next.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ready to move on to timeliness?
Yes, yes, I think we will not move on to the issue of the timeliness as to the, to the house permit. We've closed public comment, so I guess it's, what thoughts we have on it?
And I have a question for the town attorney. One of the main issues that was raised here, it seems like, at the end of the day, this is really a legal issue that sits in front of us, as opposed to a factual determination to be made. Although I understand that if one were to determine that, oh, a good cause is available to us, the ZBA, then it would begin to mix in fact, but just as an initial threshold matter, what is your opinion and advice to us as to whether we, a zoning board of appeals, have the ability to recognize good cause to waive the window for filing an appeal?
My review of the cases indicates that it's not something that can be done administratively, it can only be done by a court. The quotation that Attorney Schumadin was struggling for, when he said whether they messed up or something like that, or to concern about the administrative messing up is, "We have decided that the application of the good cause exception is a decision to be made judicially rather than administratively to prevent local arbitrariness," is the term the court used.
So. Obviously was not involving Cape Elizabeth, the decision.
And this sentiment, if not in those words, has been repeated by other, in other law court decisions, where they indicate it's a judicial determination to be made at the superior court level, rather than at the board level.
And would it be your, with the understanding that, it sounds like your advice is that this is an a ability that the court has that the administrative body lacks, would you nevertheless recommend that we should make particular findings of fact of any sorts to aid the court? if anyone were to choose?
I think that all the board can do is indicate the reasons why it's making the decision it's making. The way I read the decisions, the avenue that's available to the board is to dismiss the appeal as untimely and to indicate the timeline or the reasons for doing, reaching to that conclusion, basically. And then it would be up for the superior court to hold a hearing to address many of the factual issues that have been discussed by the persons here to see whether or not it would be appropriate to apply the good cause exception in this circumstance.
My impression of this is, is though I don't necessarily like it, don't necessarily agree with it, I think that I agree with Mr. Wall here. I'm not sure that we have any discretion to look beyond the 30 days here. It's, the language of the statute is what it is. I'm unaware of anything in the ordinance that says these are only suggestions or, you know, you can, you can reach outside the parameters of what we say here in extreme situations. So as I sit here right now, I'm inclined to rule that the appeal in the house is untimely.
And I would agree. I think it boils down to, at its core, the problem is that the ordinance itself doesn't have any notice requirement for abutters for particular types of projects reaching a particular level and it just is not an aspect of the ordinance and because of that, or maybe not because of that, but for whatever reason, the appeal was not filed until after the time period had passed. And as you noted and as town attorney has noted, it appears the ordinance has no leeway granted to us. The time has passed, it's outside of our ability to address the issue.
Yeah, I'm actually sympathetic to the Murphys' petition. And just a full disclosure, I live across the street from the ocean. But, and I do think, someone mentioned earlier that, you know, there are procedural things here that, you know, again, so I like to say on the board, I'm the non, I'm the non-attorney on the board, so everything to me is a practical equation and, not that it's not with my esteemed colleagues, but I think that there's some things that, like, you know, the posting of the building permit, some people don't like to see building permits on their houses when they're doing renovations, but I think that's a cue. I think, you know, perhaps we need to look at, you know, putting something in there about people's rights to appeal building permits, whether it's on the back of the building permit or something. I mean, there's some, some things here that I think need to be looked at. We don't have much latitude, as I think both Chris and David have mentioned, you know, as far as the appeal period. But I think, and, you know, for that reason, you know, I think, I think that the 30-day appeal period has come and gone, but I think that the town needs to look at some of the procedures under which building permits are issued and making the citizens aware of what the relative rights may be to appeal permits in the future, so.
I agree with John. I mean, you know, I am likewise sympathetic with regard to the fact that folks have to go into the ordinance if they're not familiar with the fact that there's a 30-day appeal period, but at the same time, the ordinance is very strict with regard to the 30-day appeal period and the timeline here with the permit issued on June 22nd, actual notice to the Murphys on July 16th of the work being done under the permit, and then the appeal not being filed until August 24th makes it incredibly impossible for us to kind of look beyond the requirements of the ordinance with regard to the 30-day appeal period.
I would concur with the thoughts of the board that I'm very sympathetic to the appeal as well and at least the ability to have, you know, your voice heard and an appeal considered. But, I mean, I read the ordinance the same way that the town council does and it's, it's very strictly worded and there obviously could be, you know, further discussion, you know, outside of the board about, you know, changes. So there could be better notice and better opportunities for, you know, abutters and other interested parties to appeal these sorts of decisions, but the way it looks in the ordinance, it's, it's pretty black and white.
I think that, Joanna put some of the findings of fact on, that we think are germane on the record already here, but I'd reiterate a couple more of them before I think we, that I'll move for a vote, that on June 19th of 2012, the Murphys filed a permit application for their property at 29 Powell Point Road to renovate existing interior and add 1,038 square feet, second floor addition. The permit was assigned, building permit number 120452. The permit was approved on June 22nd, 2012, as issued and applied for. Based on the chronology submitted by the Murphys themselves as part of their, their appeal, I think it's undisputed that they had actual notice of the construction prior to the expiration of the 30-day, 30-day appeal period. I believe that, looking at this, it looks like August 16th, I'm sorry, July 16th of 2012, they had, they had actual notice. And I guess I would incorporate my reference into our findings of fact, the chronology that the Murphys have submitted as part of their application here. And based on that, I would, I would move that we vote on the issue of whether this appeal should be dismissed because it's untimely. I move to dismiss the appeal with some regret, but nevertheless move to dismiss this appeal on the grounds it's untimely because it was not filed within the 30-day window set forth by the ordinance. All in favor of dismissal?
Do we want to vote on the findings of fact first?
Should we rule on the findings of fact, council? Or is it sufficient what I put on the record?
I think a better procedure would be to simply take a vote on the decision, direct or any, and then articulate the findings of fact in support of the vote.
Okay. Okay. Well, maybe we can do it this way to expedite it a little today. I put some findings of fact on the record a moment ago about the chronology and other issues I think are relevant to, I think the whole board thinks is relevant to the issue of the timeliness of the appeal. Does anyone have any issues with those findings of fact as I put them on the record? Okay. Are we all in favor of that, those findings of fact going into the record as submitted?
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay.
Do we have a second, one? Did we have a second?
I seconded.
We have simultaneous second.
Simultaneous, a second and a third. All in favor of, in those findings of fact being put into the record, all in favor of dismissing the appeal as it relates to the house, number 120452, on the grounds that it is untimely?
Second motion.
All in favor? That appeal is deemed dismissed. We, as we talked about earlier, are going to have a site walk on October 9th at 4:30. Mr. Wall is going to provide us with some additional guidance about how we should, how we should organize that and is that a communication you can provide directly to us or?
Everyone.
Okay. Okay. And that's, that's our next step on this and we will, we will suspend the hearing on the patio permit until the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting, which is next month. And I believe that there might be another related issue on, on the docket as well. So I would move to adjourn this hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's okay.